After given notification that the hearing is being recorded in accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law and broadcast over to Lunenburg Public Access. I'd like to introduce you to the board members. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the Board Secretary, Al Gravel, James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Paul Doherty, Pat Callahan, and David Blatt. The way it will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address, and the board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. I don't see any public here, but if anybody comes in, they have to come forward to the mic, give their name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. The board will deliberate, and there are required findings for special permit. They are: One, that it will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic flow congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons. Two, that it will not have a material adverse effect on the value of the land and buildings in the neighborhood or the amenities of the neighborhood. Three, that it will be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use. Four, that it will not produce noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the application.
You can have a seat, gentlemen. This is an application for a special permit, an amendment for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Ralph Trigot, does business as Mass Ave Motors, Inc., 381 Mass Ave in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby petitions as follows: To amend a special permit originally granted on September 23, 1983, and amended December 5, 1988, and December 15, 1992, and permit the leasing by the landowner of the so-called main building, portions thereof, to third parties. The proposed action has not begun, has begun, I'm sorry. The basis for the application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250-4.5A, 5B. Street address of the property is 381 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, assessors map 74, parcel 74. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Ralph W. Trigot, trustee. Deed recorded in Worcester Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 7218, page 105, and recorded July 27, 2010. If the undersigned has any knowledge of a prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case, describe the case and the dates involved. The undersigned hereby petitions to amend a special permit originally granted on September 23, 1983, and amended December 5, 1988, May 5, 1988, and December 15, 1992. The special permit questions and answers are as follows. A: Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion? The reply: The proposed amendment will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion. What the petitioner seeks is the continued use of the site for activities that have been performed on the site continually in the same form since 1988. There will not be any material adverse change. B: Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: The petitioner's proposal will not have any material adverse effect on the value or land and buildings in the neighborhood or amenities in the neighborhood. If the petition is granted, there will be no substantial change of any of the activities on the property for which the amended special permit is sought. C: Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if in open use? The reply: If the petition is granted, there will be no substantial change of any of the activities on the property for which the amended special permit is sought. D: Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The reply: If the petition is granted, there will be no substantial change of any of the activities on the property for which the amended special permit is sought. And that is signed on February 19, 2019, by Ralph Trigot of 381 Mass Ave in Lunenburg. Attachment two to petition of Ralph Trigot does business as Mass Ave Motors. The following additional information is provided because it is considered important to this case. The petition is to resolve an ambiguity in the special permit relative to the ability of the landowner to lease parts of the property to third parties, a practice that has pertained since at least 1992. The town has customarily issued business certificates to the petitioner's tenants since that time. Apparently, the lease of the shed portion of the property has been specifically permitted since 1992, according to the building inspector, see sketch number one. This petition seeks to make it clear that the same permission extends to portion of the main building, see sketch number two. Attached is sketch number one showing the main building and the shed in the back. Sketch number two shows the main building that houses Mass Ave Motors in the showroom, a mechanic shop, and two separate shops in the back of this same building. There's a list of abutters attached, a site plan from the Board of Assessors showing the site, a field card from the assessors' office, a letter from the Building Commissioner Gary Rhodes dated March 6, 2019. The applicant is requesting an amendment to their existing special permit. The initial permit was granted on September 23, 1983. There have been several amendments since that date. The amended special permit granted in 1988 attached a new condition. The condition, number seven, provided: The granting of the special permit shall annua to the benefit of the applicant and shall cease in the event the title to the premises is transferred or in the event the business is sublet to another party. In 1992, the special permit was further amended to allow the restructured nine-bay garage to be sublet for body and mechanic work. The current request will allow the main building to be sublet in part. I've attached copies of the amended special permits. You don't want me to read these, do you?
No, I don't.
So attached are the copies of the special permits that have been amended, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant or his representative up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Bedanza. I have a professional address of 36 School Street in Leamester, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to present his request for relief this evening. As you heard in Ms. Normandin's presentation, what's proposed here is essentially to continue what's been going on on that property since 1988. So if the relief slot is, in fact, granted by this board this evening, nothing substantial or nothing material will change whatsoever with the use of that property. So you have, you know, decades' worth of experience with Mr. Traugott and his operation of the property, so we have a pretty good test sample of what he does there. And what he does there is operate an automobile showroom, and he does, in fact, and has, in fact, leased the property to third parties for a good, long period of time. We believe that a lot of this, which brings us here this evening, is the result of some confusion in the way the permits were granted over the years. The building inspector did a careful review of this property and essentially uncovered what he believed was something that should be corrected, at least for the record. So, as you heard, Mr. Traugott's been operating or been occupying this property since 1983. He came here for a variety of permits and amendments over the years, and he's operated his automobile showroom there continuously from 1983. There was a shed in the back of the property that was not occupied by any tenant, and in 1992, we came before this board to extend the ability to lease that property to third parties. The necessity for that relief was in part that the property had to be brought up to code. There were certain things that were deficient, that the then-building inspector would not permit the leasing of that property to occur. But once Mr. Traugott, in fact, brought it up to code and satisfied the building inspector as to the viability of that, as a structure for those purposes, relief was granted by this board for him to lease to third parties that particular structure. We would submit that the building inspector in 1992 was well aware that Mr. Traugott was leasing portions of the main building. The permit that was issued in 1992, the permit that was issued in 1988, just never specifically addressed that. The town has granted business certificates to his tenants consistently going back at least as far as 1992, and, you know, nothing really has changed. So with respect to the special permit criteria questions relative to your required findings, relative to anything in the proposal that would be injurious to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire, explosion, or other reasons, like I said, you have a pretty substantial test sample here that none of those things have occurred since 1988 or 1992, and that nothing is going to change with respect to the way the property is operated. That would go as well as to material adverse effect on land or buildings. I don't believe there's anybody here to comment or oppose this. I believe that that has never been the case, that Mr. Traugott has been a responsible landowner and has used the property appropriately. With respect to will the proposed action be operated with reasonable guard for order and sightliness, you've all probably had an opportunity at one time or another to see the property, probably have seen it several times as you've driven by it, or saw it specifically in connection with this particular application. Again, nothing is going to change. Mr. Traugott keeps a pretty clean operation over there, and of course, will in the future. Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly determined detrimental to the normal use of the adjacent property? Again, no impact from any neighbors, no opposition from any neighbors, been operated for a goodly long period of time. If you read the original 1988 special permit with that condition that brings us to this sort of ambiguity this evening, number seven says, "The granting of this special permit shall annua to the benefit of the applicant and shall cease in the event the title to the premises is transferred," clearly not the case here, but we understand, of course, what the purpose of that condition is, "or in the event the business is sublet to another party." Well, Mr. Traugott has his business there, and he clearly is not subletting his business to a party, and although he is subletting the real estate. I would suggest that there's a difference between those two concepts. It would be a fair interpretation that what was intended by that condition was that if Mr. Traugott wasn't there on the property, either as a result of selling out and leaving, or getting off the property as a result and becoming only a landlord and not being there on the property at all, then the board would probably view his other conditions and his other promises with respect to the upkeep of this property with a jaundiced eye because he wasn't in complete control of it. And it would be perfectly reasonable for this board to suggest at that point that whoever was going to be in control of that property should be before you, making the same representations, promises, and having some control over that party, just like you had over Mr. Traugott. So in substance, I would say, he's been a responsible landowner, he's operated the property in a sightly condition, in a sightly way. We think this corrects a problem. I had a lengthy talk with the building inspector, very polite man, very professional, indicated to me why he was doing this, and I understood, and we told him we would fully cooperate and come before you and ask your humble consideration on this application for relief. And if there are any questions, I would be happy to entertain them.
Thank you. I just want to go a little bit on the history. It was born, the original permit was '83.
Correct.
And in '88, in fact, I was actually at this hearing. I was an associate member at that time.
Oh, okay.
When between '83 and '88 was the property sublet, that main building? Do we know?
It's been almost 36 years, so...
Right.
I would say, I didn't start renting...
Could you approach the microphone, please?
No, you have to come up. Correct. Name and address.
We can hear you, but the people at home can't hear you if you don't come up to the mic.
My name's Ralph Traugott. I own Mass Ave Motors. The exact date when I started renting, I'm not exactly sure exactly, but I would say I was there for at least a couple of years before I decided to rent space.
So probably around '85.
Yeah, I would say so.
Eighty-five, eighty-six.
Eighty-five, eighty-six, yes.
So prior to the, I actually, I'm like you, 36 years ago, I don't remember, but I do remember going down there, and I do remember, or I'm pretty sure that you were renting at that time, you had the mechanic in the back.
Yes.
At that time. So I just wanted to get it in my head when you actually, I felt that it was prior to the '88. I think they knew that at the time. I agree with what you're saying, but I just wanted to see if we had a better history of that.
Sure enough. Thank you.
With that, I would open it up to the board.
So, Mr. Chairman, my first question was, based on the 1992 letter we have, it mentions that the petition was withdrawn based on the conditions that had to be satisfied?
That is correct.
Do we have anything that was saying that those conditions were ever satisfied?
Yeah, that was discussed early on, when he said he couldn't do it because of the building inspector didn't like the conditions.
Right.
Then he did what the building inspector wanted.
So was there ever...
Satisfied it.
Yeah, I can tell you if you noticed, I was on that.
Yes, I saw that. That's why I'm asking.
I do recall they did come before us. They actually came to get a special permit for that. It was denied based on the fact that we had, from the fire department and building and different things, that they were in violation of a lot of codes at that time. So what we did was, we allowed him to withdraw without prejudice, I believe. And he did that. I do know that he came back after everything was brought up to code, and I don't know the date. I wish I did.
I didn't bring the whole...
Yeah, you didn't bring that, yeah. But I can recall that they did come back after all of the renovations and codes were updated, and it was granted that he could use those back sheds as, you know, lease them out.
That's not the space we're speaking about.
That's not the space we're speaking about, correct. The main building is where he was with the Mass Ave Auto Sales, and there were people subletting at that time.
The 1992 permit was granted on December 15, December 15, after the code compliance was achieved. And the building inspector and I have discussed that, and he understands that, and he knows the history of that, and he acknowledges that.
Yeah, I believe that because he actually acknowledges it, and one of the things he said, that that was permitted.
Okay. And then, I'm trying to understand from six, sketch number two, the building sketch that you have, the shed, is that an additional business, or is that part of Mass Ave Motors?
That's the, that houses additional businesses that were permitted.
So we're looking at four businesses on this property?
Correct. That was permitted by the '92 permit, correct.
All four were permitted by the '92 permit?
No. Specifically, the '92 permit only addressed the shed.
The shed.
That's correct.
And that's what had to be brought up to compliance.
That's why we're here tonight.
And when they say shed, I don't know if you've been down there.
No, I understand.
It's a separate building. It's a big building, yeah.
Yes, but this is going to be on the property that's four businesses presently today.
I guess it'd be five, right?
Yes.
Five.
Five?
There's shed and there's four, Mr. Traugott's and three others in the main.
I thought the mechanic shop was yours as well.
No.
No. Best way I can explain it, I used to have a body shop.
Okay.
And a mechanic shop.
Right.
And I forget exactly when, but I ceased to do that and rented the body shop, which is a licensed, registered body shop.
Okay.
And I also rented the mechanic shop. There's also a body shop in the shed, which is also licensed, registered. He has a business license from the town and the state. And so, right now, I have four guys, and one just moved in, but he hasn't really started yet, so I'm hoping that I can resolve this and get these guys some business licenses so that they can make a bank account and, you know, accounts at parts stores and what have you. They want to be legit, so...
I was just looking for the clerk.
Things change. Sometimes tenants leave, sometimes, you know, I get a new one. You know, I get a few guys that have been there for a number of years, so I try to keep the good ones and move the bad ones along.
Not the other way around?
So is it a mechanic that's currently there who has left, and a mechanic's coming in? So it'll be the same line of work going on in that structure?
Yes, yes, sir, yeah.
And you're well aware about no junk cars outside, no parts?
No, no, no.
You know the drill as far as what we expect.
No parts strewn about. I rule them with an iron fist.
Right, okay.
Any junk, we take the Cody's and parts. I have guys that stop by and pick all the scrap, you know, fenders and hoods and engines on a regular basis.
Right. That's just standard, you're well aware of that itself.
Sure. I like it looking good.
Any other questions?
I have one question, Mr. Trevin. So, right now, you have three, it's you and two subtenants, and now you want to have a fourth in that main building?
There are two guys in the shed, and I have two guys in the main building.
Okay.
One just, one does work for me out front, which he wants to go on his own. And I have two empty bays in the shed, and I believe that's going to be rented, so I may have five or six.
But, so you're here in front of the board because you have to sublet it again, the new business has to come in?
The relief that's really being sought is to be able to sublease portions of the main building, like he does with the so-called shed.
Well, I guess the question is, how many businesses are you looking to sublet to? How much do you want to be able to sublet the property?
Well, I have two in the shed right now and two in the main building.
Right.
I have one guy that does work for me in the main building out front, which eventually he's going to want to go on his own. In the beginning, this is the best way I can explain it, I asked permission if I could rent space, and I was told the main building is up to code. I said, "Can I rent space?" They said, "Why can't you? There's nothing in the bylaw book that says you can't." I said, "Oh, great." So I've been renting space in the main building because it was up to code. It had a heating system, it had electrical system.
Uh-huh.
I said, "What about the shed? Well, you got to put a heating system, you got to upgrade the electric, you got to separate the bays." So I did all that, and then it was Roger Williams and Dennis Carrier came and re-inspected it, and I said, "Good job. Now you can rent the shed." So I've been renting all along. It just, you know, some people stay for a while, others are there for a short period of time, you know? You just never know. Some are successful, some are not.
So that's what I, so I'm just trying to understand, so you're before us because the building inspector now thinks that you have to have permission from this board to sublease the main building?
He believes that the paperwork just didn't live up to what was going on there.
Okay.
In other words, the way he suggested it to me was, is that, look, the paperwork doesn't really support what's happening there. I understand what happened, I think he understands that, how this came about historically, but, you know, he has a difference of opinion with the prior building inspector. The prior building inspector perhaps knew more of the history, was, you know, acquainted with this as it developed from over year, over year, permit after amended permit, and Mr. Rhodes just wants to sort of clean up the record, if you will, and I don't blame him.
Okay.
Way back when, I was given permission to rent the main building before the shed, but none of those guys that gave permission are around anymore.
Right.
So there's nobody here to speak up for me. But I did ask permission, and I wouldn't tell you a lie.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why.
Yeah, that's it in a nutshell.
Any other questions?
So, realistically, when the 1992 ruling came about, the main building was basically as it is now.
Yeah.
And it just never was, it was never worded into...
You know, in retrospect, would have been better if the '92 permit referenced the fact that the, you know, activity in the main building was permitted previously and should continue, yeah, of course.
Nothing really changed.
We probably wouldn't be here, but that didn't happen in '92.
I think you're correct. Any other questions? Okay. I'll just comment that on the seventh from the '88, I almost, and I'm not sure, but I almost think that was like boilerplate, in the sense that generally it meant that if you sold your auto, like today, if you sell your auto business or you sublet to somebody else, they have to come back before the board.
100%.
In this particular case, you haven't done that. It's pretty much the same business it's been since '88.
Yes, class-two license, used car license.
But I think the building inspector was correct. It is in there, so it has to be here and cleaned up.
I agree.
But that's just my opinion. Any other comments, questions?
So, none of the other businesses are looking for display or anything advanced?
No, they're all inside.
It's only yourself that has the permit to display.
Yes, all they're looking for is a business license, which most of them have received through the years, to have a bank account and to have accounts at auto parts stores and a tax number, you know, basically to be registered and legitimate.
Right. No, I understand. I just, I wasn't here in '88.
Sure.
On the board, so...
I was seven. Anything else?
God bless you.
I will open up to the public, if anybody would like to speak, that they're here for the next one. Okay, hearing done. I guess I will go back to the board for a motion or discussion.
I don't have any questions.
I don't either. I'm good.
Okay, and could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, but what exactly is the motion going to say?
Well, I think, I think that it really is to clear up.
Right, so is that how we get a word that?
That he can continue to sublease the space.
Right, continue to sublease the main, the...
Properties.
Yeah, in the main building. I don't think the part in the back is before us. That's a separate issue.
Right, no, just, right.
So just that he is allowed to sublease the main building as it, or continue it as it has been in the past.
Yep, that's what I'll lead with. That'll be my...
Second.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't think there's anything, any conditions, anything we have to apply because we're just clearing up.
Just say same conditions as previously agreed.
Other than seven. Okay, with that, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. With that, it's passed. I do have to read. You'll bear with me one second. Okay, with that, the permit is maybe granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying, I'm reading the wrong one. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit-granting authority or the enforcement officer. To ensure compliance with any conditions, noncompliance or such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court within 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and the special permit, this doesn't apply, but it shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. With that, good luck. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
I would like to watch the record too, because Normandin, a great town employee, a big help in this process. Thank you.
That's always good to hear.
Thank you very much.
Wait until we were off the air to say that. Was he? Was he? Yeah.
Okay, just one second. Okay, it's now seven-thirty?
I thought you brought your mouthpiece.
We will, this is a continuance of a hearing from March thirteenth. The petitioner is William Tapley, 146 Lancaster Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. The property is, which is the subject of this case, is owned by William C. Embavin M. Tapley, 146 Lancaster Ave, Lunenburg, Mass, SS map seventy-one dash twenty-nine, and the applicant is seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to build in addition on an existing home. The proposal will require relief from both the side yard setback and height regulations as outlined in the code of Lunenburg, section two fifty dash five point two E, one A, and two fifty dash five point three A, two, respectively. The applicant had requested a continuance so that he could revise the plan regarding the side yard setbacks and the height regulations. I see there's nobody here, but again, if anybody comes in, there will be a public comment period, and we would open it up. Again, if anyone, if you would like to speak again and address the continuance, please come forward to the mic, name and address, and go over your new plan.
Good evening, William Tapley, 146 Lancaster Ave, Lunenburg, Mass. Revised the plans, as you can see, we, we're now approximately ten feet, ten feet plus the narrowest point from the setback, which originally was one point three feet.
Correct.
The floor plan basically stayed the same. There was a bump out of closets in one end that we put towards the back, and then the entryway now is just in from the side as opposed to encroaching on the property line on the left side.
Okay, just a quick question, because I didn't see, I know you brought other plans. What is the height now of the, the building on that side with the ten point three?
I've got, are those the, those were the original plans, or is that the new?
Those are the new ones.
These are new.
I think so. They dated three nineteen.
Are these the new plans?
Yes, yeah, three nineteen. Because I believe it's six feet added to.
Well, I know, I know what the zoning is, what is the actual height that you're proposing now?
This is right at the, right at the property line, the roof at the property line?
Correct.
I believe it was just under eighteen feet.
Just under eighteen, okay. Because now, with the new setback, it would be allowed fifteen point three one, so just for you to know.
So the three point.
Right.
Three feet variance max, you know, roughly.
Okay.
So it's less than what you were asking the last time, since you moved it back, that's all, so it's, it's better?
Yeah, it's much, it's much better, last time it was, the allowable was six point.
Was like six forty something.
Six point two?
Right, it was, yeah.
Right. Six point three, yeah.
Okay.
Will you be having a, a door that goes into the existing house in the back corner there, or have you thought about doing that?
I can do that on that laundry area.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had thought about that.
We thought about it, that area we can kind of tweak a little bit.
And if you're, as you're growing.
Right, because that kind of extends the existing mudroom, which would be nice to have it flow in, into the new part.
Right.
Reuse that door.
And that's how you enter is between the house and the garage, there's a deck set of stairs and then to the mudroom?
From the, from the outside, yeah.
Right, right.
And then we could also enter on the other side through the deck as shown, or also from the existing mudroom of the house, too.
I think the job you've done is commendable on, you know, reworking that, and it looks so much better, and.
I think it would be better overall in the long run, too, being.
Yes.
Further on.
Makes it part of the house.
Right.
If you want to make it part of it, instead of having it as a in-law apartment or something, you, you have more flexibility.
Yeah, and I can even, we talked about even opening up, making that entry from the existing mudroom into that laundry area even a little bit wider, more to flow through, so it's.
Yeah, no, I think you're pretty much done what we asked you to do.
Just to clarify, the A of the roof is going the long way from the existing garage towards the backyard. The peak of the roof goes that direction.
Right, front to back.
Yes, so therefore you're, the property line, you're only about eight feet, the roof line's only about eight feet at that point, right?
From the ground, yeah.
Yeah, from the ground, right, so that's, he's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking from the footing, I guess is.
Well, from the footing still, even the footing is, the footing is only.
Yeah, but if you bury the footing four foot, that doesn't count.
Well, I'm saying the dirt, so it's going to be.
Right, top of the dirt to the peak of the house.
Yeah, that's correct.
The top of the dirt to the bottom of the roof is roughly?
Eight, eight and a half, nine feet.
So at least nine, but you still, you have more than enough.
That would be more than enough.
You have fifteen up to nine. So that part, you're not looking for relief there, you're just looking for relief from the property line.
Exactly, so I was misunderstood then in that dimension.
No, that's fine.
Thanks.
That's what we're here for.
So does he still need a height, height?
No.
It doesn't appear he does, and that's why I was asking the question, but.
Why wouldn't we just, why wouldn't we just approve the height, just in case?
We can't, certainly when you make the, you know, if anybody makes a motion, they certainly can.
And I'm sure when you scale it out off of this, it's definitely within that, I don't know why I was thinking from the, the base, the.
If you look at the top peak, it's probably sixteen feet.
Yeah.
You know, if you build it that way.
You could put in the, not to exceed ten feet or whatever, you know, if you want to make the motion. I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make, I'll make a motion.
Just before, any other questions by anybody?
No.
And there's only one young person in the audience, and if he would like to speak, he may.
So you all in favor, come on up.
He rides his bike up to the center a lot, and he wanted to know what was upstairs there.
Now you know.
Democracy in action.
Tell them I used to play basketball up here. That's true. Okay.
Explain the high ceilings.
With, with no public comment, now please make.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit for dimensional variation for the side yard setback and the height regulation based on the registered plan submitted on three twenty-two, two thousand nineteen, for the side yard, for the side yard setback.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, with that, special permit is granted for dimensional variance, a little post-reading. The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner comply with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances, and any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to periodic review by the permit granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with any conditions, noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of the permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within fourteen days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court twenty days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that twenty days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded, and the special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use of construction has commenced. And with that, good luck with your new addition.
Good luck, good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anything else to come before us?
If it gets dry, those are the best.
That's why I asked.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.